To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, free, open, and just.
Amen.
Okay, thank you. All right, as we have made a common practice at our second meeting of the month, we recognize employees who have reached milestones for their work here at the county. Obviously, the work that's done among the dozens and dozens of departments, 2,400 employees we have, you know, who work every day to serve the citizens of this county. You know, we know what a great job they do, and this is, you know, we invite them to come up. We do have six we'll be recognizing today, although I believe only two are here in person, which is fine. We do have something for them, and we can, we'll call them up. And if you'd like to speak at the microphone, you're certainly welcome to do that. You don't have to, if you don't want to. But if you want to come up and just say a few words about your time here, or just, you know, you know, do an eagle's cheer or something, it's up to you. Feel free to, to, to do that. So the first name we have, first person recognizing, from Children and Youth Department, celebrating 20 years of service to the county, is Jennifer Horn.
Sorry, I'll be quick. I just want to say, I love my job, and I work with an amazing group of people, and I'm grateful every day for you guys. You are awesome. Thank you.
Also celebrating, sorry, also celebrating 20 years of service from Public Defender's Office, I do not believe is here today, but Michael Laxson. So we thank, oh, oh, so, okay, great.
I'll be quick, too. I just want to say it's been a pleasure working for the county, being with the Public Defender's Office, and serving the Inge community here in Bucks County. Thank you.
Thank you. From Department of Corrections, celebrating 20 years, is Amy Williams, who I don't believe is here, okay. Also from Department of Corrections, celebrating 20 years, is Jesse Rodriguez. Right? And, you know, travel in threes, I guess, also Department of Corrections, 20 years, Raymond Ziaika. And 20 years ago, I guess, there was a lot of hiring going on. 20 years at the Area Agency on Aging, who I believe is here, Russell Toranto. Congratulations.
For those that know me well, I'm not very brief, but I will be brief today. It's been an honor and a privilege to work here in Bucks County and serve the citizens, and I leave everybody with this, which had been a lesson that I learned a number of years ago, and when I was working in foster care. There's been no greater honor and no greater privilege than to serve people, and that's something that I learned here at the county and look forward to continuing that work. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Another presentation, or a second presentation, is regarding Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week, and Commissioner Merseglie has a proclamation to read.
Thank you. And whereas for more than 25 years, the National Coalition for Homeless and National Student Campaign Against Hunger and Homelessness have sponsored National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, whereas this week is meant to educate the public about the many reasons people are hungry and homeless, and to encourage support for homeless assistance, service providers, and community food banks, whereas Bucks County is home to many organizations providing such services, including the Bucks County Opportunity Council, the United Way of Bucks County, the YWCA of Bucks County, Family Service Association of Bucks County, and other community partners that comprise the Bucks County Housing Link. And whereas the mission of the Housing Link is to prevent and end homelessness throughout Bucks County, because all residents deserve an opportunity to have safe, affordable housing, and the chance to achieve economic self-sufficiency. And whereas the Bucks County Commissioners recognize that hunger and homelessness continues to be a serious problem for many individuals and families in Bucks County, and are grateful for organizations and nonprofits dedicated to those who need it most. So now therefore do we, the Bucks County Board of Commissioners, proclaim November 11th through 18th, 2023, as National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week throughout the county of Bucks. And in so doing, we commend the Bucks County Housing Link and all the community partners who make up the collaborative effort for their hard work, caring for the hungry and unhoused people in our communities. We encourage all residents of Bucks County to support them in any way you can.
Okay, thank you very much. And presenting, the name's already on the board, but we do have from three of our very critical organizations here we work with all the time, Heather For, from the Bucks County Opportunity Council, Muriel Kelly from Family Service Association, and Kristin Chapin of the YWCA. Thank you ladies for being here.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you to the Commissioners for allowing us to have the opportunity to share with you all today little information about hunger and homelessness here in Bucks County, a little data to share with you in regards to both of those areas, and ways that you can get involved to help. I do want to take a moment and just ask all of the members of the Housing Link and COC who are here with us today to stand up and just be recognized. And these are also the folks, as we move through this presentation, that you all can connect with if you have questions or want additional resources regarding homelessness and hunger here in Bucks County. Next slide, please. So as you can see, through the many logos that are listed on the bottom of this slide, this is a partnership and a collaboration of many community agencies and partnerships within Bucks County. I'd like to thank the leadership and staff at all of these organizations who have worked really hard to put on a full schedule to recognize and raise awareness for hunger and homelessness. As you can see, we have been doing things like the SNAP Challenge, we've had a social media kickoff campaign that started on Sunday. We're currently operating a cold weather apparel drive through an Amazon wishlist for those folks who would like to contribute in that way. We had a volunteer day at the Help Center yesterday in Bristol, where volunteers packed nearly 500 bags of food for residents. This morning, there was a volunteer day at the Reach Out Foundation in Pendale, and of course, we're here with all of you this morning, sharing information about hunger and homelessness. Tomorrow morning, we're going to be hosting a poverty simulation through BCOC at St. Cereals of Jerusalem in Jamison. We encourage anyone who hasn't participated in a poverty simulation, this is a really wonderful experience, it's nine to 12, registration is still open if folks are interested in attending. We're going to host and stream simultaneously a screening of the film The Public, where individuals and households who are experiencing homelessness find a safe place in a local public library where they can connect with resources. So it's a great way to connect and have a visual representation of what folks are experiencing when they lack a place to live. And then we're going to wrap up and, you know, share information about all the wonderful things that have been happening throughout the week. So I am going to turn it over right now to my colleague, Heather For, from Bucks County Opportunity Council, who's going to share a little bit more information with you regarding hunger here in Bucks County.
Next slide. Hi, thank you for having me. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I just wanted to give you a little snapshot of what hunger looks like in Bucks County. 6.2% of our population are food insecure. That equates to a little over 40,000 people who are food insecure right now in Bucks County. The one thing that makes us interesting in Bucks County is that of those food insecure, 52% of them are above the 200% federal poverty income level for SNAP benefits, which means they are working, but they're still struggling and not able to feed their family, and they rely really heavily on charitable food programs. So this information is collected each year, and we get that from Feeding America's Map the Meal Gap. Next slide. And this is what the charitable food system looks like in Bucks County. You know, we are very fortunate in that we have over 80 food pantries in Bucks County. Most of them are run by volunteers, faith-based organizations, and social service providers. We also have a lot of different groups who offer community meals. We know that AHTN provides a monthly calendar for the lower Bucks area, so that if people need a warm meal, they know where to find that. Fresh Connect is a weekly distribution that we do at four different locations in Bucks County. This is a partnership between BCOC, Rolling Harvest Food Rescue, St. Mary, Phil Abundance, and it's funded by the United Way of Bucks County. We recently raised the income limits for Fresh Connect to 300% of the federal poverty income level, because we wanted to make sure we were capturing the people that are working and still struggling. We also work closely with Rolling Harvest Food Rescue. They work with the local farmers in Bucks County, so that we have an abundance of local produce to be able to give out during the local harvest season. And the Help Center is a food warehouse and distribution center in Bristol, and we offer an emergency pantry, home delivery service, and senior food box programs out of that. And just to mention, there are public benefits, but as I mentioned before, not everybody who needs food assistance is eligible, but we do promote it for those people that are eligible. Next, I'm going to turn it over to Muriel, so she can talk about what it looks like for homelessness in Bucks County.
Muriel Kelly with Family Service. First and foremost, I want to say thank you for allowing us to be here to recognize our people who are experiencing homelessness, who might, who are also experiencing food insecurity. This is definitely a job that, difficult, but very rewarding, so it's a privilege to be able to share with you some of the work that we do. When we talk about the 2023 pick count, we have a group of people, including our street outreach team that goes out, and we basically try and identify individuals who are homeless. And so in 2023, we had 320 residents sleeping in emergency shelters, transitional housing and hotel paid for by charitable organizations. Of those individuals, it includes 105, which is 30% of people, who are also sleeping in Code Blue shelters. And then we have 67 adults that are sleeping outside, and those are just the people that we are able to find on that day in January when we go out and count. It does not include people that we don't see. And it does not include individuals who are couch surfing, who are doubling up, who doesn't have their own place, who are basically housed in instability. And so we did have a 25% decrease in the homeless count numbers, but it is something that we do every year, so we'll see what happens. Next slide, please. So when we talk about homelessness, we have this graph up here that talked about 463 people experiencing homelessness, at least for the first time. Of the numbers, we have 850 people who are placed on the waitlist every year, and this is something that the Housing Link manages. So we're constantly answering calls. It's about 2,000 calls per month of someone experiencing some type of housing crisis. And of those calls, we have 19,000 calls are placed in Housing Link. So we are definitely busy answering the calls, but without the community support to be able to provide the resource and support that they need, we would not be able to address homelessness the way that we do in Bucks County. Next slide, please. So we talk about opening our doors, and this is something that the Bucks County Housing Link do by taking these calls. The Bucks County Housing Link is a housing crisis response system for families and individuals in Bucks County experiencing homelessness or at imminent risk of homelessness. Through a partnership of public and private organization, we offer help to people so that encounters of homelessness are rare, brief, and non-incurring. Next slide. Bucks County Emergency Homeless Shelter. Before clients come into the shelter, we have to actually fill through the calls to figure out who we can actually take at the shelter. We're limited in our space. The Housing Link has taken about 24,000 calls, that was last year, and of those calls, 8,220 are looking for some resources. Some of these resources not only include shelters, but we're also talking about housing instability, they're doubling up, they are, we're trying to help them from being evicted, so we have, we do have resources in the county to assist, but we are definitely trying to figure out how to help. So our neighbors include people like you. When we talk about the emergency homeless shelter, of those, about 150 are on the waitlist specifically for shelters. The numbers goes up and down. In 2020, we had about 30 households. During COVID, we did see a spike in the numbers, so we're averaging about 150 individuals, actually household, waiting for a shelter. In 2022, the shelter has provided temporary housing, nutrition, and care for 375 individuals, couples, and family, from all backgrounds, and of which 157 of them were kids. So on average, we did see an increase of children in the shelter, from 15 to now about 50. So currently, we have about 43 kids in our shelter. And so we are fortunate to be able to bring this information to you, to bring awareness that our job is not done, and that we continue to need your support and your resources to address the homeless issue in Bucks County. Thank you.
Next slide, please. So how can you help, right? First of all, we'd like to ask you all to share the information that you learned today about hunger and homelessness here in Bucks County. We want you all to use your power of influence to positively impact those who are experiencing hunger and homelessness here in our community. Connect with the many community partners we have who are working together to make sure everybody has a place to call home. As you know, our vacancy rates here in Bucks County are very low, and the rents continue to increase, which makes it very challenging for individuals who are already experiencing homelessness to find an affordable place to call home. We all know, especially those who do this work, that self-sufficiency starts with housing. And we really need to push back the stigma associated with homelessness, that everybody who is experiencing homelessness is choosing to be there, that many have criminal backgrounds, that these individuals are dangerous, and those things in itself are dangerous. Changing how we refer to people experiencing homelessness can really reshape the way we approach the issue, that homelessness does not define the individual. And of course, we want you to get engaged in the work. Heather, I think she missed a slide, but we were talking about, we're having a Thanksgiving food drive, and maybe at the end, we can go back to that slide, but we encourage you to participate in the Thanksgiving food drive to help those who need a meal for the holiday. I know that our local Code Blue shelters, who help to house individuals on the coldest nights of the year here in Bucks County, are in desperate need of volunteers. You can use your time and your energy to help in that way. And of course, get involved in all of the wonderful activities that have been planned in recognition of Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, and we encourage you to continue to be engaged. And feel free to reach out to any of us, all of the individuals here that stood up and are standing up for this work. Thank you so much.
And actually, if we'd have, let's really just come forward, we have the proclamation. Yeah, and all the other partners, if the other partners want to come up too.
Yeah, can we have all the senior partners come up?
Yeah, quite a few, absolutely, yeah. It's a big room, we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you not only for the presentation, obviously, but for all the work that's done every day. So, and we have some, could tell, some county employees mixed into that group as well, not just the nonprofits, but we do work together very well as we, to help those in our communities who are most in need. So thank you so much for that. Final presentation we have today is an update from the Community College. We have Dr. Ganther here, President of the Community College. Welcome.
Good morning, everybody. Let's do it one more time. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
So glad to be here, Commissioners. I want to thank you for allowing me to come and do my annual presentation on the wonderful things that are happening at Bucks County Community College. And, someone moving this for me? Okay, hey, okay, you can go to the next one. I've got a few slides, and I just want to share with you some highlights that we have from, there we go, that we have from this past year. As many of you know, we had a wonderful grand opening of our Center for Advanced Technologies. It is an absolute fabulous building. If you have not had an opportunity to go by and see it, may I suggest that you take a stroll to the Epstein campus and take a stroll through our building. It is an absolute treasure for Lower Bucks. We graduated 132 students through four classes for our public safety, and those are students who are working for our fire programs and services here in Bucks County. Suitable, which is a technology, right, that's very similar to Facebook and those kinds of things, gave us an innovator award. We are one of the number one community colleges, who partnered with them in order to create an engaging platform for students. We have a wonderful partnership with Temple University, as well as Estee Lauder, which is located in Bucks County, to create a supply chain scholars program. That means that a student who's interested in supply chain gets accepted into the program, they get a full ride from Bucks County Community College into Temple University, and then they get a job making over $70,000 a year. I think that's a really good program, wouldn't you agree? Two years in a row, we've had record fundraising. We raised 1.5 million this past year in donations to support student scholarships and basic need resources. You know, the presentation today about homelessness and also food insecurity impacts college students. And I don't know about you, but when you don't have a place to stay, and you don't have food to eat, it's going to be hard to do well on the test. So we want to make sure that we're supporting students. We'll go to the next slide. And then we have been rated again this year, super excited, as the number one online community college in Pennsylvania, and I believe that the work that we're doing in the hybrid and the virtual world is extremely important, particularly for those who are in hybrid work schedules. And so being able to be responsive to that. And then, again, with my wonderful partners here, Erin, appreciate you. We have, we have coaches from the Bucks County Opportunity Council onsite to help students who are experiencing some self-sufficiency challenges to help them. And then, we've been designated as a PA Hunger Free Campus, and so we are working diligently to ensure that students do not go hungry on our campus. And we're looking at how do we support students and their families, by making sure that they are also not going hungry. Go to the next one. And then, we, with the help of the Commissioners, received the Veteran Friendly Yellow Ribbon School Distinction. We started a pilot with Veteran Services this past year, and we are expanding that this year, and we're happy that in that growth, we have now this distinction. At our Lower Bucks campus, we have Credit Counseling Center, and I'm super excited about this. I know some of you may be as well. But Bucks County has its own Centurion Ale, and so we have a brewing and fermentation program, and we're excited with the release of our new premium ale. So if you can get to the brewery at Moss Mill, ask for Centurion Ale, and tell them Felicia sent you, maybe they'll give it to you for free. And finally, our Centurion newspaper, which is, you know, it's not a dying art, but a fading art, journalism. And so we're excited that our journalism program won more than 15 awards this past year for Keystone Media. So we're excited about the work that we're doing. Now I want to talk a little bit about, go to the next thing, graduates. I love seeing students, but more importantly, I love seeing students graduate. And so we saw this last year, a thousand more students graduating from Bucks County Community College, and we also saw a significant percentage transferring on. Let's go on into enrollment. You can hit it again. We're up. Let's clap, that's a good thing, right? But we're, we're not where we need to be. Most, if not all, community colleges in PA and across the United States are having declines in enrollment. And unfortunately, Bucks County Community College saw a significant decrease beginning in 2018. So we still have about a 22% lift, but I'm, I'm hopeful that we will get there. But as you can see, there are some ways that we are definitely working with our enrollment, and that's particularly with our occupational students of color and dual enrollment, that's high school programs. We can go to the next one. One of the fabulous things that we're doing is we are making sure that we provide the same level of support to families. We know that there are a number of students who, they're the first in their family to go to college, and they don't understand college lingo, they don't understand what a FAFSA is, and they don't understand why they have to give up their tax information well. So we want to make sure that we have a portal that supports families, and doesn't matter if they come to Bucks County. We just want to make sure that we are a resource for every family who wants their son or daughter or their family member to realize their academic dreams, and so we want to highlight that. So it's called Bucks Connection. Again, it is open to any family that is interested in support on going to college. We'll go to the next thing, which is workforce development. I want to say a shout out to, to the Workforce Development Board and Executive Director Barnes for her support. You know, we've grown our workforce development in incremental You know, we've grown our workforce development in incremental steps, and so, I will share that, you know, we started off with firefighting in 2000, you can go to the next one, and then, from 2014 to 2020, we added five programs. But I want to, want to show you what we've done since 2021, you can go to the next one. This is an explosion of workforce development. It could not have been done without the partnership of my good friends from the Philadelphia Construction Trades, who are working with us on pre-apprenticeship programs, and we just had our second cohort go through the pre-apprenticeship for construction trades. But all of these other programs are in response to the demands and needs of our local community, and we want to make sure that people are able to go to work, whether it's an eight-week or 10-week CDL course, or a four-week floral design effort. So, we want to make sure that we are being responsive. We can go to the next thing. There are some new initiatives that we're doing. First of all, I encourage anyone who is a lifelong learner, particularly those over the age of 50 like myself, we are creating a lifelong learning community. It is membership-based, it's an annual membership fee, it includes enrichment classes, free admissions to events, fitness center, and a gamut of opportunities for those of you who still want to be engaged, maybe want to learn a new skill. But if you go to lifelonglearning@bucks.edu, email them, and they will definitely reach out to you and let you know what the perks of participating in our new initiative is. You can go to the next one. And then, we have some new programs that are coming in. Again, I want to thank the commission, I particularly want to thank Margie for working very closely with me on a couple of these things. But we're, we're doing an industrial maintenance program with Estee Lauder. Again, this is a quick program to get people into jobs and get them into jobs that are paying well. We understand that there is a void in law enforcement professional development. This is for the people who are in police, policing, and we are working on developing that. As you all remember, there was a, in Ohio, there was a serious freight train issue, right? And unfortunately, training around how to deal with that is only done in a state that's on the west side of the country. So, we are excited about the fact that we will be able to do railroad safety, and we will be the only area that is doing this type of work and training individuals for freight train catastrophes here in Bucks County. So, I'm very excited about that. And then, skincare, everybody want to have beautiful skin, right? So, we are developing a skincare program, and we are, we are going to be hosting it with the Upper Bucks Tech School. So, we're excited about these new programs. And then, I want to send a shout out to my good friend over here, our Health Department lead, and we're working on some programs with B-Chip, and making sure that we are addressing the needs in nursing and other medical occupations. So, we're excited about that, and I believe we have some money that will be coming through the state with the Workforce Development Board to address those. Let's go to the next one, I'm almost done, I promise. Student success. Again, want to honor and thank our, our county commissioners, because we received additional funding to support some of these efforts. But as you know, when you get into the foster care system, the chances of you realizing a college degree or a credential is nil. So, we are working with the county foster youth to create a support program for those students, those that are experiencing recidivism, or they're coming out of drug and alcohol abuse. We have a new collegiate recovery program, and in fact, we're hosting a program this afternoon to jumpstart that. For our disabled students, the ability for them to join and honor society, that was very exciting for us to be selected as an institution to host that. Veteran Services, we have a lot of veterans who are in our, in our county, and we want to make sure that they are getting to the jobs that they want, that they're transitioning, that we're able to take their military transcripts and support them in that transition. And then, we have plenty of individuals in this county who have some college and no degree, but the, the idea of coming back to a college campus where they think everybody is 18 to 24 is daunting, and so, we are creating a program to support that. And then, I want to say, I've got one last thing, I promise. Click, click. Yes, there we go. On November 9th, the U.S. Department of Education released a press release concerning the Biden administration's raising the bar, attaining college excellence. And in that, they listed the top community college for every single state that had the highest transfer out. That means going from community college to university. And I am happy to share with you that out of every community college in the state of Pennsylvania, Bucks County Community College is the top community college transfer institution. And so, on behalf of our chair, Tom Jennings, the Board of Trustees, and all of the employees at Bucks County Community College, I want to thank you for your support, I want to thank you for your engagement with us, I want to thank you for your continued appropriation to the institution so that we can support every single student. And as you know, my motto is that Bucks County Community College will continue to be the institution that helps any individual realize their college, professional, and personal dreams. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I know Dr. Ganther did already, but recognize Mr. Jennings, who is Chair of the Trustees for the college, for being here. Thank you for all the work you put in, and the rest of the trustees, please pass that on. It is, you know, sitting here watching this, watching the presentation and having a child who was a graduate of the community college, you know, it's interesting to see, it's really putting the community in the community college, in terms of reaching out to as many different people and different groups, and trying to make sure you're hitting every, everybody could possibly, you know, benefit in any way. So, thank you so much for that. Any comments, sir?
Doctor, thank you for the wonderful presentation. Thank you, and Tom, who's the chairman of the Board of Trustees, and I know how hard the board works to make what I consider to be the best community college in the state of Pennsylvania, Bucks County Community College. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to our public comments. These are comments on agenda items, so we ask speakers to confine themselves to actual things that we will be voting on, and I do see quite a few people who may want to take this opportunity to get on with their day in some other way. Well, we don't take it personal, it's okay. So, we have a pretty short list today. Ed Mackhouse?
Thank you, I'm Ed Mackhouse from Buckingham. I'm a former teacher, I taught for 10 years in the 70s, scientist, engineer, and I like to come, I'm addressing the issues of mental health diagnosis and testing for mental health things I've experienced. I appreciate all the presentations here. We see there's a lot of great work that is being done dealing with homelessness, and one of the causes of homelessness is conflicts in the family. Everyone has difficulties resolving the issues. Another issue is money, how is money distributed, what are we doing? I think that America is the greatest country in the world, we have the most resources, technology to become a, regain as a superpower. There's no free energy, there's, nothing is free. It always takes a kind of work and analysis. The idea that you can have free energy, like this windmills, they're burning up, the energy, fossil fuels is the most sustainable. We talked about the trains having derailed and all, that's because of, they don't have the pipelines. The pipelines is the most efficient way of transmitting fuel safely. So, they had to take out some old trains, which are not safe, and that's why we had this disaster. And the trillion dollars being lost due to this energy farce, we, we need to rethink the energy, become energy independent again. The raising the price of gasoline financed the war for Russia, causes unlimited problems, possibly a nuclear war. We have to look realistically at the trade-offs. There is always environmental problems, but the environmental problems with the fossil fuels are less than other problems. So, as a physicist, scientist, we have to deal with the reality. Reality is, we need money. A lot of this solar energy stuff makes China richer, we need to make America richer, so we have more Americans working, and not to be so much a materialistic society. We have to look at keeping relationships satisfactorily and protecting women, the trans people don't protect women. We have in University of Pennsylvania, where the women were terrorized by the trans person, and now we have all this anti-Semitism with this Hamas people. Being kind to the cruel, sooner or later, you're cruel to the kind. So, I appreciate the work you're doing to help people, but there's always more work to be done. Thank you very much.
Okay, Andy Warren?
Congratulations to the three of you for reelection. Two, two quick points. One, with just a little bit of facetiousness, should I be struck by lightning as I stand here? I want to personally thank Commissioner Marsaglia and her staff. Anna, it was a good thing you did with recognizing homeless. Newtown Presbyterian Church and my wife deliver food to people who live in a motel who are considered homeless. While she was delivering last week, one of the people had an issue with a county facility, and they didn't know what to do about it. So, I called Commissioner Marsaglia's office, and within 24 hours, 48 hours, it was resolved. So, thank you, and Anna, and that'll probably be the last thing you agree with so far. And the other, the other point that I speak to today is 18B. Five, half a million dollars that we are spending for the workforce program, which is a good program. But again, I ask, what is the original source, not the pass-through source of this money? There's no county funds, it lasts for one year until next June. Will this be the end of the program next June? Or will county taxpayers then substitute for no county dollars? Or will, whatever the source is, which I'm asking what the original source is, will that source continue funding what is a good program? I just want to know who's paying, and how long is it going to last? Thank you. And I did mention that.
All right. I recognize our prothonitary, Ms. Christian, to speak about something on our agenda.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about the Prothonitary Self-Help Legal Forms Library. Doesn't really roll off the tip of your tongue. If anybody has any snazzier ideas for a title, I'm open to it. But all kidding aside, this is a very important project for the county. It went before records improvement last July and received both approval and funding. And a snapshot of this important project is that it is a forms instructional library that will both exist on paper and electronically. And electronically, it will be responsive to all devices, such as tablets, your home computer, and your phone. We have spent the last four and a half months talking to lots of people we worked with and had many people review the project. We got substantive feedback, which we incorporated into the project, and I am happy to say that we have the approval of our solicitor and the solicitor's office, court administration, the family masters, the law library, and poor Margie probably got more calls and emails than she ever wanted to from me. There's lots of really positive things to come out of this program. For court administration, there's going to be uniformity across the docket, filings will move more efficiency, efficiently. The lawyers in Bucks County will have less buck slips and rejections to deal with, and the folks that want to work hard to represent themselves, they will have a means now to work with the law library and also electronically to attempt to do that. One great thing, there's going to be a lot less paper, and we also expect many positive streamlined results in the PFA application process. And I know this may sound corny, and some of you have heard me say it before, but with this project, the words "and justice for all" take on a new and significant meaning in Bucks County, and I'm just very proud of the work that my staff has done, and I respectfully ask your support of this project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate all the work, thank you. Just addressing the question Mr. Warren had, 18B. So, it is funding that's coming through the state Department of Human Services through the Temporary Aid to N needy Families, TANF. Okay? If you would like to add some, Ms. McKevitt, can I get some more detail?
Right, so this is formula dollars from the federal government that comes through the state, and it comes every year. Every year, depending on the, on the federal budget, right? When it's passed, making sure that it comes through the state, and then it comes to the counties. And it used to go to the nonprofit when it was a nonprofit, now it comes to the county because it's now a county agency. So, you will see that every, every year. You're welcome.
Yeah, and it is also mandated, the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act, what's called WIOA, mandates this kind of review of the work to make sure that the money's being spent properly. So, part of that process. All right, those are all the public comments. We have the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of November 1st, 2023. Are there any comments or questions regarding those minutes?
No.
Hearing none, we will incorporate those into the consent agenda. So, the minutes and resolutions, 1 through 18C, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Under regular agenda, we have budget adjustments. Mr. Bascola?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. For your consideration today is adjustment number 16 for 2023. This adjustment would recognize additional revenue for the District Attorney's Office and allow for the expenditure of, of that funding through new programs and expenditures. No impact to the general fund.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, any comments or questions? Is there a motion to approve the budget adjustment?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, personnel actions, commissioners' list, any comments or questions on the commissioners' list? If not, is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Other civics contributions to be made, $1,500 to the African American Museum of Bucks County, $3,000 to the American Red Cross, $2,500 to Quaker Town Community Outreach, $2,000 to Snipes Farm Education Center, $1,200 to the YMCA of Lower Bucks. Is there a motion to make these contributions?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Chief Operating Officer, Ms. McKevitt?
Oh, thank you. First, I want to congratulate the Board of Commissioners on their reelection last week. It's an understatement when I say it's been wonderful to work with you all these past four years, and we all look forward to the next four years, there's a lot of work to be done, and we want to continue the great work of this administration. We have a lot of projects in the pipeline, so we're, we're all thrilled that we're going to be able to continue to do that. Speaking of last week's election, Randy, if you will pull up the slide for me, I want to thank our Board of Elections folks, and please note that these were all of the departments and offices and row offices that participated in last, last week's election, and they continue to come back each, each year. We are grateful for their time, we do, we do pay them overtime, but they, they come back every year and, and help us get through the election. The election led by Gail Humphrey, our chief clerk and deputy chief operating officer, and Divisalina for the Board of Elections does a great job cheerleading through the, through the election. election, and we could not do it without Randy. Randy, you do a great job. Thank you. We hope that the president... We have two more elections coming up. Gail, do you want to make mention of the specials coming up?
Um, please, we don't have time.
Okay.
Yes, so the Board of Elections staff, if I thank you for the opportunity, I'll give a public announcement plug. So everyone may remember when you use a mail-in ballot that first you have to fill out a mail-in ballot application. Every year, despite the fact if someone checks a box saying they want to be a permanent mail-in voter, they still need to fill out that form. So because this is a presidential year and because there's a lot going on, we may have additional elections to run, we're going to send that letter earlier than normal. Under state law, we're supposed to send it by February 1st. We're going to be sending that letter to everyone in Bucks County who has checked the permanent mail-in voter box when they signed up for mail-in voting. Please fill that form out. If you want to use a mail-in ballot during the upcoming presidential primary and then the general in November, you must first fill out the mail-in ballot application. The sooner you fill that application out and get it back to the Board of Elections, the sooner we will be able to process. I want to also commend the Board of Election employees and staff because they processed over 80% of the mail-in ballot applications that we, ballots that we sent out into the world. We got over 80% back. We had been trending in other elections about getting 70% of them back. So just naturally with this being a presidential, we assume more voters are going to exercise the right to vote. So when you see that mail come from the Board of Elections in December, please fill that ballot out as soon as possible. The board will be, we will be very busy moving forward. We have a special election that we will run in January, which has to do with the North Penn School District, which is primarily in Montgomery County. However, there are two small areas of Bucks County that incorporate that public school. So that will be a small election we need to run. They're going to put a referendum because they want to float a bond to do, my understanding, some additions to one of their buildings. There may also be a special election in February. Stay tuned on that. We don't know, but that is a possibility. And then there has been talk in Harrisburg about the moving of the presidential primary. There has not been action on it yet in the Pennsylvania legislature, but they do have the power to do that. This year, the primary falls on a religious holiday, and there was talk about moving it up. If it does get moved up, naturally, everything the Board of Elections does gets moved up. And so we are already prepping and preparing, and we look forward to helping everyone and letting them exercise the right to vote in this upcoming primary. Thank you.
Good job. Good job. Thank you, Gail. And then next, I want to thank the courts, the row officers, county offices and departments for their cooperation in the development of the 2024 budget, led by Dave Bascola and his staff in finance. It's a continuous work in progress. We are set to release it, and it will be on the county website next Wednesday. We are meeting with the Commissioners this week to go over individually what the budget will entail, hopefully with the adoption timeline of December 20th. And then lastly, I just want to wish all the county employees and the residents a happy Thanksgiving next week, and enjoy your time with your families and your friends. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Solicitor's report, Ms. Fitzpatrick.
In a rare public comment from me, would like to share, this is my seventh election cycle working for the county, the first being in November 2020, which was certainly a first election to work if there ever was one. I continue to be in incredible awe of the election staff, of their hard work to ensure that we have a safe and fair election. Very grateful to be a part of that team and wanted to acknowledge my deputy county solicitor, Dan Greaser, who has increasingly taken on the work in providing advice and counsel to the election staff and does an incredible job doing so. I also wanted to acknowledge and thank the judges, Judge Lillard, Judge Corr, and Judge Jaeger, for being a pleasure to work with and for all of their work on the Board of Elections during this last election cycle. I have just one item to report. The board held its standing executive session yesterday, November 14th, with staff and legal counsel present to discuss personnel matters pending in prospective litigation and to receive confidential legal advice. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll go back to our public comments on any topic. Mr. Mackhouse?
And Mackhouse again from Buckingham, former teacher, scientist. Go back to the Dr. Clausar, Nobel Prize physicist, who explained that the climate change is not influenced very much by man. This is a natural phenomenon, and we're wasting trillions of dollars on this climate hoax stuff, and we should go back to the fossil fuels things. Then also on the transgender thing, like we have terrorizing swimmers at the University of Pennsylvania with a transgender person and the possibility that that'll happen in Bucks County, like in central Bucks where they favor the transgenders. There's ShareSexChangeRegret.com is by Walter Hyer, who was a transgender woman for eight years. He says, he gets thousands of calls, women who are troubled, people that experience a trauma, and the solution for a trauma is not to change your sex. God doesn't make any mistakes on your sex. You can't change your sex. You can change the way you dress or the way you act and you talk. You can't change your sex. And this causes a lot of trauma and a lot of problems to people. The people who are said they'll commit suicide, they don't do this transition. After 10 years, the ones who do the transition are 10 times more likely to commit suicide. We need to deal, as a scientist, with reality. I like to deal with statistics and facts and not in the profits for the transgender medical industry, which is a billion-dollar industry, which is rapidly growing, and that if a person is convinced about transgendering, it's a million dollars in surgeries, and the surgeries don't work, they live a lifetime of pain. Thank you very much.
Okay, Andy Warren?
I'm going to have to get a new warm-up act, I think, if I'm going to keep speaking Just an observation more than anything else, more that, and these are observations, that I used, I always thought that this was a meeting of government, a government meeting, interaction. And I come before you again to ask, just consideration, sometime there's got to be more of an interchange with you and the public. For example, the presentations took 40 minutes today out of our meeting. The consent agenda, including the answer to my question, took five minutes. The regular agenda took two minutes. The personnel actions took 15 seconds. The other civics took one minute. The solicitors, chief operating officer was seven minutes, solicitor was two minutes. It's not, the majority of this meeting is not, the presentations are good, informative, nice to hear, but it doesn't, I have no more understanding of what you all believe than when I walked in the door. We've got to somehow consider that. And the only other point again for consideration, last week I mentioned about we're doing away with Election Day. Now, we've already begun the election a month, within less than a month before the last one ended. What, if we got to have these things back, and I appreciate your position, in December, what significance is an Election Day? Whoever gets there first is fine. We have no idea what candidates are going to say.
All right, thank you. I would, I guess, the only comment I would have in terms of Commissioners having an interchange with the public, there was, I guess you could say we had one last Tuesday. So that was a pretty good interchange, I think, for at least the three of us. So we will move on to Commissioner's comment. Commissioner DeGrom.
Okay, thank you. I also want to thank our election staff for the job that they've done managing this election and the past elections. Thanks to Kelly and her staff, Gail, and Amy for all the hard work that you put in. And I've said this from the very beginning, that our elections here in Bucks County are safe and secure whether you voted the polls or whether you vote mail-in. So again, I want to commend the staff, everybody, for their hard work. And one other comment on another issue that probably didn't get a whole lot of publicity, but I, I think in my mind is a really big deal. There was an announcement, I think maybe, I don't know if it was last week or the week before, from Harrisburg in the Department of Human Services, that they are anticipate re-enrolling 140,000 people in Pennsylvania who lost their Medicaid benefits, and that's our health insurance. And that happened for a variety of reasons. It started in April of this year where people had to re-enroll. They did not have to do that during the pandemic, so for two years, they didn't have to fill out any applications, and people who were already enrolled kept their Medicaid benefits right through the pandemic, which I think was absolutely the right thing to do. And so when they had to re-enroll, there were an awful lot of people that during that time period had moved from where they were when they were already enrolled. The paperwork, the applications did not get to them. There were some, a lot of questions about income because Medicaid is based on income, family income, and personal income. So there were an awful lot of people in Pennsylvania that lost their Medicaid and their health insurance. And the Department of Human Services and the administration up in Pennsylvania said that they were looking at all the applications and people who missed, and they estimate they're going to re-enroll another 140,000 people. And that is a really big deal because most of the people are on Medicaid or they're because of, based on income, they're below the poverty level. And if you look at how important it is to Bucks County, and I'm using an unscientific approach here because I don't know for sure, but Bucks County is about 5% of the state's population, so if you play that out, 140,000 people, 5% of the population, it's probably about 7,000 or 8,000 people in Bucks County that are going to get reinstated in Medicaid. And I believe, because I've worked in Harrisburg for so long, that a lot of people that lost their Medicaid benefits were children with disabilities. Because even though the household income might be above the limit for Medicaid, if you have a child in the household that has a disability, that they are entitled, the child, not the family, they are in child, entitled to get on Medicaid. So I would imagine a lot of those 140,000 people were actually children in the state of Pennsylvania that were kicked off the Medicaid rolls because they had a disability and for whatever reason, they lost it. And, you know, Medicaid is so really, really important. We have an expanded Medicaid in Pennsylvania. The last time I looked was probably close to 800,000 people were enrolled because of expanded Medicaid. And if, and I know Rachel knows this, but Medicaid is kind of like a split between what the state pays and what the federal government pays. It's a match. And every state's a little bit different because of their, they've got a formula that they use, like a cost of living formula, every state uses. Last time I looked, Pennsylvania was probably like about a 50-50 match with the federal government. So the federal government pays half of the cost of Medicaid and the state pays the other half. The county is not involved in anything, and when people get on Medicaid at the county, I mean, that's, that's a good thing for the county because they have health insurance, and it's a good thing for the population. Because if these people were not on Medicaid, they would show up at the hospital anyway, and the hospitals, say in Bucks County, would be rightfully so forced to treat them for whatever their illness is. And that would affect everybody because that would affect the cost of insurance, the cost the hospital have to pay out. So everybody would pay more. Medicaid is a good thing. It helps keep people healthy. It helps people, gives them health insurance who really need it. And in my mind, that 140,000 people being reinstated and put back on Medicaid, it's just a lifesaving, a lifesaving event. And I don't know if it got a whole lot of publicity, but it really caught my eye. Thank you, Mr. Jeremy.
No, thank you. Appreciate it. Commissioner Marsaglia?
First off, thank you very much to the voters for allowing me to have another four years to work with you and for our great staff for working for us, with us for the past four years. I do want to address one thing. For the past two or three years, we have had to listen to quite a bit of vitriol from the public at these meetings, and that's okay. That's what we are elected to do. But this place is not a place for people to express their hostility to people who are minorities or of other genders. And Mr. Mackhouse, I've had it. That microphone is the county taxpayers' microphone. It is not the place for you to discuss your hate. You need to take your hate to your therapist or your god. Thank you.
Want to echo some of the words, certainly, you know, well said by Commissioner Marsaglia. Appreciate the people here today to recognize the good work that's being done by this county, by the employees of this county, by the nonprofits who are still here, some of them sitting in through the meeting. We appreciate all the work you do every day. You know, with Thanksgiving coming up next week, it's certainly something to, you know, we think about. Not just the food on the table, the family we'll be with, you know, travel plans, things of that nature, but also, you know, really, really giving thanks. You know, of course, it was, it's been a tradition in this country, going back to the foundations, the first settlers, having meals, you know, you know, at the end of the Abraham Lincoln was the first president to really sort of make an unofficial declaration of this holiday and picking up on a tradition that really existed mostly in the northeastern part of the country at that time. But to really give thanks for what we have and in some way also to think about things that, you know, maybe we've lost or think about those who don't have the same things we have. You know, thinking about what we have here in this county, obviously, we're thankful for, as Commissioner Marsaglia said, you know, I'm thankful for the honor to remain as a commissioner. Appreciate the trust placed in me by the voters of this county. I take it seriously, and I appreciate the recognition of the work we've done, which I think is really what last Tuesday showed. Want to thank also, you know, a gentleman named Jerry Jonas, who is a Korean War veteran, used to work for the Courier-Times as a columnist and has really made it his mission to remember the Korean War and his fellow Marines, airmen, sailors, soldiers who fought in that conflict. We are, we weren't able to have a Korean War memorial in July like we typically do. It was very difficult to get it together, you know, but this marks, this year marks the 70th anniversary of the end of that war that took the lives of over 30,000 Americans. And still, obviously, technically, has never ended as we still have the demilitarized zone between the two Koreas. But we are going to have a memorial service here this Saturday. I know that he has been working with our, with Matt Allen, our Veterans Affairs Director, and so we're, you know, really proud that we're going to be able to help him and give thanks to those veterans who served, whether they are here with us or whether they have passed on. Want to also thank, as has been said a couple of times, the people who work in the Board of Elections. This was a little odd, I think, for the three of us, since we came into these offices. Typically, it's the Commissioners who serve as the Board of Elections, so we are the ones who make a lot of the decisions about what's happening, following state law and trying to do what we can to help voters. And obviously, since we were on the ballot this year, we were not on the Board of Elections. And so certainly we thank, as Ms. Fitzpatrick did, the three judges who sat in those seats, these seats actually, and made those decisions. We appreciate all their efforts, the work of the Board of Elections staff, the volunteers, the poll workers themselves, the people who are working in the precincts all across this county who don't get a whole lot of money for the county, who don't get a whole lot of money for the 15-hour days they put in, but we really appreciate the work they do, regardless of the party, regardless of where they live, you know, or why they're, why they're doing it. We really appreciate it. We literally could not do elections without them. And I'm really thankful for, you know, the work that you saw highlighted here regarding homelessness and food insecurity. It is easy in a county as wealthy as ours, and we've heard it at that microphone from people who think we're spending too much money to help people, you know, obtain jobs or too much money helping, you know, foster children or too much money helping people who have some kind of challenge, whether it's intellectual or physical. You know, and certainly, you know, as we think about, you know, the tables and the food that we'll be sitting in front of in a week or so, you know, please be conscious of those who aren't going to have that. You know, the people in this county, and there are, as you saw, tens of thousands of them, for whom that image of a table full of food with turkey and mashed potatoes and sweet potatoes and things is really very much a fantasy for them. It's something they see on TV and have never experienced themselves. There are people like that in this county. And so anything you can do, any amount of money, a can of food, anything you can donate to any of the many, many, many food shelters or the agencies we have here can really help make that a reality for people in this county. So we appreciate all of you thinking about that over the next week or so. And, you know, I guess the final thanks is for, really, congratulations to one of our staff members here who added to his family. You would expect that when Mr. Nagy had his child last week, of course, he was going to be born on Election Day. Perhaps another little, you know, warlord tactician in the making. So we congratulate him and his much more lovely than him wife. You know, he's definitely outkicked his coverage. Everybody knows that. But congratulations on the birth of your first child. Appreciate it. And I'm certainly thankful for my two fellow Commissioners and the rest of our senior staff, you know, Ms. McKevitt, Ms. Humphrey, Ms. Fitzpatrick, you know, for all the work they put in and for taking this job, you know, seriously and their obligation to the people of this county seriously. So it makes the job a little easier when you're working with people who really have their priorities in order. So I appreciate all the work that you do, and thank you for everything. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you.